Good evening. Welcome to the August 20th, 2020 meeting of the Southampton Town Zoning Board of Appeals. This meeting is being held via video teleconferencing in accordance with Governor Cuomo's Order 202.1, and until further notice, all of the board's meetings will be held remotely. So we ask the public to continually check the town's website for updates and new information. There are also options on the website for public comments and to preregister to speak on public hearings. So please consider that for all future meetings. If you wish to view tonight's live meeting only, please do not join the Zoom meeting. Please go to the town's meeting portal, choose the meeting group from the dropdown on the left, and click on the live link at the top of the page. If you wish to be heard during a meeting but did not preregister, please go to the town's meeting portal, choose the meeting group from the dropdown on the left, and you will find the information required to join the Zoom meeting. With that, I'd ask you that you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all other We will be starting this meeting with the public hearings, and we will take number 12 out of order and first do the technical difficulties at our last meeting. We have applicants and members of the public standing by via Zoom webinar, which is being moderated by CTV. I think number 12 actually had technical difficulties with the prior meeting. But we're trying to make sure that everything goes smoothly with number 12. Charles Sutton will be muting the speakers until it is their time to give testimony before the board. Please be patient. If you find that you have difficulties accessing the hearings, please visit the town clerk's meeting portal and click on the instructions link. A reminder that applicants, agents, and members of the public speaking other than attorneys will be sworn in, will state their address for the record, and will offer their testimony as it relates to the application before the board. Board members who must accuse themselves of any application will state so on the record and will be removed from the meeting until the end of the hearing. Unless otherwise stated at the end of each hearing, all of these applications will remain open for written comments from the applicant and the public until September 21st, 2020. Those comments can be addressed to the board secretary and sent via email, mail, and/or dropped off at Town Hall. Additionally, in accordance with the governor's order, these hearings will be recorded and will be posted on the town's website. And with that, I would make a motion that we approve the minutes from our last meeting.
Motion.
Do we have a second? Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. Tunnell.
Mr. Tunnell wasn't at the last meeting, but I brought myself up to speed for the contents of the last meeting. Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And I have two amendments to the minutes. The first one is actually from our July 16th meeting to make a correction. That Cornelius Kelly was accused on the application of Jack Bartome. So we have a motion to approve that.
So moved, so moved.
Begging. Mr. Tunnell.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next, I have an amendment from our last meeting on August 6th to reflect that Michael Daly arrived late to the meeting and also that the application of Frank Francese was reopened and adjourned to August 20th, 2020 rather than September 3rd. Do we have a motion?
Begging.
Mr. Tunnell.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And now we'll go on to adjournments.
Okay, the agenda, there are some adjournments for the agenda. So we will go to item eight on the agenda, which is KTB, Flying Point, Preventable Trust. Move to adjourn that to 10-1.
Do we have a second? Begging. Mr. Tunnell.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Item 10 on the agenda, which is John Nicoletti. I'll move to adjourn that to our September 3rd meeting, 9-3.
Begging. Mr. Tunnell.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
And then on the decision calendar, we have Mark Levin and Marianna Luce as the first two items. They've both been withdrawn, those applications. And then here's what I'm going to do. Name off the decisions. They're all going to be put off to September 3rd. Zaplinsky, K.A.R.P., Management Group LLC, Gregory O'Halloran, Marlene O'Halloran, Frederick Van Wick, OPH Building Corp., Christopher Norwood, Old Core Development LLC, and BH680 LLC. I move that they all will have those decisions on September 3rd.
Begging. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, so as far as the first application we're going to hear tonight, it's going to be item 12 on the agenda, which is Michael Scorola and Jacqueline Cress, 108 Springville Road in Hampton Bays, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-261-3-10. It's my belief that we already have jurisdiction, I believe.
We do.
Yep, yep, this is the Radigans.
Yes.
Dave Radigan.
Yep. Good evening, Dave.
He said good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Dave Radigan. I was sworn in two weeks again tonight. This again is with reference to Scorola application at 108 Springville Road in Hampton Bays. And just refreshing the board's memory, I don't know if I'm high or too low. My wife is here prompting me. In refreshing the memory.
Do you want him to say it right away? I'm just...
You can just update the board.
Okay, very good. Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yeah, refreshing the board's memory, we were looking for some setback relief, area relief variance for an ASB deck, as well as pyramid relief for a proposed two-story structure involving 2,567 cubic feet of impoundment into the sty plane. We also were seeking from the town code variance, variance 167B, 1A, special type for variances, probably existing 711 square foot cottage with a proposed expansion of 870 square feet, create a two-bath home. This amount of square feet expansion put us well over the 50% mass maximum expansion limit under the variance appeal. Although our appeal and arguments were sound and presented with reason, it appears is not well received by this board. We also argued that the blue's area variance as opposed to the use variance. Again, it appears that the board was not very well persuaded by our presentation. I say all that to say this, it was also presented and discussed that the property lends itself to being a subdivided two single and separate parcels. And for this reason, Mr. Scorola and Ms. Cress, the owners, are requesting from the board at this time an adjournment from this appeal application to grant some additional time to explore what might be all of their options. That two-week period that we had from the 6th just would not give us a lot of time. Therefore, we are seeking an adjournment of 60 to 90 days. I will draft a formal letter to the town secretary and send the appropriate $70,000 We're looking to come back no later than November and to get our findings. We may at that time either go ahead with the application and choose to continue our appeal, or we may amend the application with regards to the degree of expansion, or we may end up withdrawing the request altogether.
What's the date you want, Dave?
Mid-November, if possible.
Okay.
What did Katie ask?
She asked the date.
My only suggestion is, and this is directly from the owners, that the board in the future are like same applications when we're talking about a 50% maximum expansion. If we could possibly have known in effect that you would have said no, they would have changed their repeal. That's the only thing and the only question that I have. We are going to be looking for subdivision approvals. It appears that that is a likely pathway that the board is going to take. Yeah, we want to seek some legal advice in the meantime and see if there's another pathway. Thank you for your service.
Let's find a date, adjourn it to that date.
Yep.
But the meetings in November are November 5th and November 19th.
November 5th and the 19th.
Yes, so the 5th would be great, November 5th.
Okay, but before we do that, I want to see, first of all, if any members of the board have any questions. And if not, I want to see if there's anyone from the public who is late waiting to be heard on Zoom this evening and get to connect you with the application of Scorola and Cress for 108 Springville Road in Hampton Bays.
I see no hands.
Okay, so Keith, it's yours.
I'll move that we adjourn this to our November 5th meeting.
Begging. Mr. Tunnell.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Daly. Mike needs to...
Mike, you're muted.
You're muted.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thanks very much. Have a good night.
You too. Thank you.
Okay, appreciate it.
Appreciate your time.
Okay, moving to the item one on the agenda, which is 1206 Flying Point Road LLC in Watermill, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-179-1-21. Applicant request relief from the following provisions of the town code. 330-11 Residential District Stable of Dimensional Regulations for a building height of 46 feet 6 inches where a maximum of 42 feet is permitted. Two, 330-84D for an encroachment in the amount of 118 cubic feet. Three, 330-46.2B1. Adjacent areas for a distance from the crest of the dune of 84.2 feet where 125 feet is required. And four, 330-46.2B4 for a minimum side yard setback of 24.8 feet where 35.8 feet is required. And a total side yard setback of 61.4 feet where 71.7 feet is required all for a proposed two-story dwelling and a non-conforming lot, many other relief necessary.
Important has jurisdiction.
Evening.
Should I begin?
Yep, whenever you're ready.
Oh, thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is John Bennett. I represent the applicant. I think Frank Greenwald is here with it as well. Hopefully, anyway. Just a couple of things I wanted to go... What we're trying to do is replace an existing house with a traditional-style house. And we need a little, what I think is a minimum, a bit of relief. But I do want to talk about the notice a little bit because it suggests that we're asking for a lot more relief than we really are. This is really heightened pyramid, so let me talk about that. The notice says that we want a building height of 46 and a half feet. What we've requested is 45 and a half feet. I think the confusion might result in the fact that if we were to take the... What we noted to the board was that if we were to take the existing house and as a matter of right, raise it to FEMA conformance, we would be at 46.6. Well, actually, part of our argument is that if we took the existing house and raised it, as that code section allows you to do as a matter of right, we'd be at 46.6. We're actually proposing a house that is a foot less at 55 feet 6 inches.
45.6.
Oh, gosh, excuse me. Sorry, Keith.
Nice try. Nice try, put another 10 feet.
I don't think, as fast as I talk, I don't think I was going to slip another 10 feet by you. So yeah, so that, and again, that may be a confusion that came about of our argument. But yeah, we need 45 feet 6 inches. Again, if we could lift the house as a matter of right, we'd be at 46.6 inches. So that's one thing. Then the other thing is, a couple of things. Minimum side yard setback of 24.8 where 35.8 feet is required. And a total side yard setback of 61.4 where 71.7 is required. The existing house has a certificate of occupancy. But really, so I'm a little bit, in terms of the continuation sections, I don't think we need any relief there. Because we're proposing, on the west side, we're at, what are we at? We're at 24.1 existing, and we're going to 24.8. And then on the east side, we're 35.7, and we're going to 36.6. And it's a little bit, I have the existing survey with me. I don't know if that's part of the package, but it should be. But even so, the existing setbacks are actually shown on the proposed survey. On the west side, right near the drywell, on the west side, near the pool, you can see, you can make out the existing setback is 24.1. And then on the west side, where you see there's two drywells and then an elevation 9.75 in a box, in a rectangular box. Above that, you can see the existing setback called out a 35.7. So, and then what you do is you take the the total side yard setbacks, we're actually getting less as well because we have, if you add the 24.1 and the 35.7, that gives you 59.8 in total. And what did we say we're going to in the total?
61.4. 61.4.
So under the continuation sections, I don't think we need any relief there. I don't think we need relief for minimum on either side or total side yard. And of course, it's all created by the rule against having, you know, your side yard has to be open to the sky. So even though that's just an accessory structure, it has to meet the minimum on the total side yard setbacks. But our existing, we're doing better than our existing certificated house. So, you know, I give that to you for, I don't think we need that relief.
Well, I'll check with Dennis.
Okay, okay. And then, but obviously, I think it's so minimal. If we need it, you could either grant it that way or confirm that we're not increasing the degree of nonconformity of any of the separate side yards or of the total side yard. And then finally, the distance from the dune crest, we're actually improving that as well by 0.1 feet. But nevertheless, you'll all remember that house down, what is it?
Brine.
Brine and the end of Fowler. There's a decision in which the board stated that the dune crest setback, unlike the coastal erosion hazard setback, which we're behind, but the dune crest setback is like any other zoning setback and benefit from the continuation provisions of the code as well. So I'm pretty much, you know, I make a tiny bit back from the existing dune crest setback, but I'm not increasing it. And I believe that I have the benefit of, not only my interpretation of the law, that the dune crest setback is a zoning setback, and I'm entitled to the continuation sections. But this board's determination, not only in Brine, was it Brine Valley? Yeah, down at the end, at Flying Point, not Flying Point, Fowler Street, but some subsequent cases, might have been FHZ as well or something like that. What was it?
Feldman.
Yeah, Feldman, yeah. So again, usually I never quibble with the notices. But I think it's important to point this out because I don't think I need relief on the dune crest setback, the minimum side yard setback on either side or the total side yard setback. Because those are, those all should benefit from the continuation provision of the town code. And, you know, that's, so I would ask you to look into that. In any case, the relief is minimum, but I don't think I need that relief. What relief I unequivocally do, unequivocally do need is a tiny bit of pyramid, just a really small bit of pyramid on the east side, which is about, what does it, we have 118 cubic feet, which is pretty small. Indeed, the house to the east benefits of a pyramid variance on both sides, both the east and the west. We need some pyramid relief, a tiny bit of pyramid relief just for symmetry on this very traditional house. And it's worth noting that, again, using this argument which you've heard before and accepted, if we were to raise the existing house, that would result actually, as a matter of right, that would actually result in 121.5 cubic feet as a matter of right. So even though it's only 3.5 feet less or as of right by raising the existing house, pyramid encroachment is greater than what we're asking for. And in any event, it's almost, I think it might be one of the smaller pyramid requests I've ever asked for. So hopefully that won't trouble you. I do want to speak mostly about the height relief we're requesting. And that is again from 40 to 45.6 where 42 is permitted. If we were to raise the house, and we have this on the submissions, the existing house as a matter of right, we could be at 46.6, a foot more than what we're asking for. This is a traditional, we're trying to create a traditional house, a gable roofed house, which we're praying that you will agree is, you know, it's an older style, older school, more traditional, you know, Southampton house. And that's what my client prefers. And we're trying to keep in what I would consider the more traditional Flying Point vernacular. There are some classic old houses down on Flying Point. One in particular that sits out proud on the dune that is, in my opinion, more of the Flying Point vernacular. And that's what my client is trying to keep true to. We need a little bit of relief here. Couple of things I want to point out quickly. Not being greedy in terms of the ceiling heights, this extra, you know, three and a half feet will allow us to put an 8.6 high ceiling on the front, or the first floor, excuse me, and an 8.6 on the second floor. You know, we're not asking for relief because we want 12-foot-high ceilings. We're asking for relief because we, you know, it becomes very difficult in that vertical building envelope to get to a reasonable ceiling height when you're constructing a traditional home. What's driving most of the truncation, as it were, if that's a word, truncation, I guess, close enough for jazz, of the vertical building envelope is the fact that we're in an AE15 flood zone, but we're south of the Limua, limited of moderate wave action line. And what that does in effect, if you're in an A-zone, you know, you've got to, you know, the governing elevation is based upon the first floor. But when you're south of the Limua line, that pretty much converts everything to a V-zone. So instead of being in a zone, an AE15 zone, where the first floor elevation has to be elevated to 17, i.e. AE15 plus 2 feet of freeboard, we're in a VE-zone, which means that the lowest horizontal structural member has to be at 17, i.e. 15 plus 2 feet of freeboard. And that steals, you know, you know, building, floor packages anywhere from 2 and 1/2 to 3 feet, that steals all that away from you. So that's really what we're asking for here. The ability with that couple, what do we have? I guess 3, 42, 3 and 1/2 feet, 3 and 1/2 feet of height relief. We think it's going to be essentially imperceptible or certainly not perceptible unless you're really looking for it. It allows us to get to 8 and 1/2 foot ceilings. We have this very, very, very narrow vertical building envelope in which to try to build a traditional house. And, you know, the board has, I think I put in 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 cases. There are some more out there in which the board granted similar relief. Feldman to 45.5. You know, there's some at 44, there's some at 45. But Feldman at 187 Dune is 45.5. And 153 Mid-Ocean, 45.95. And the whole idea being, our vertical building envelope is so squished. The nice thing about this, again, is that we're going to do a traditional house down there. This existing traditional house, we'd like to rebuild. And of course, all the usual good stuff. Now we'll comply with the FEMA elevation requirements. So that's great for the environment and great for the flood damage prevention issues. You know, current IA system, modern construction, all the good stuff that we hope you will agree will allow you to smile on our request. I don't, have I, is that it? I don't think I have anything else, but unless you have questions.
John, I just want to comment, I think this is a modest application. The only relief that is, you know, that I pondered a little bit was the crest of dune, which you've explained, that really basically you're slightly different than what's currently there. So, you know, I'm fine with that, just speaking for myself. And as far as the height relief goes and the pyramid relief, the pyramid relief is completely minimal. And the height relief is something, you are absolutely correct, particularly in flood zones where you have to raise the house for FEMA, that it's a reasonable request. So I have no problem with this application.
Thank you.
Mr. Bennett, I don't see a survey of the existing structure on there. I was there today looking at it, and I only see your survey of the proposed. So I just want to be clear, so you're not looking for... If I could see where the existing structure was on there, that would help me. if I could see where the existing structure was on there, that would help me.
Let me see, let me see if I can help you. And I'm really sorry, Michael, I thought we had the existing survey in there, but the existing building is sort of ghosted underneath the proposed.
Is it on this?
Yeah, you see, I'm just trying to indicate, and I'm so sorry. On the, this is, on the west side, towards the coast, the FEMA zone line, there's a dry well out towards the water. And underneath that dry well, you can just barely make it out, it says 24-1.
Okay.
I'm sorry, you know, and here's the 24-1.
I'm starting to see the ghost.
Yeah, I'm so sorry. You know, I wish I was better at sharing, I wish I was better at sharing the screen, but I'm pretty much at the end of my technological envelope by just being able to log on. I'm so proud of myself that I can do that. But here's the existing survey, and it's 24-1 on the west side. And then on the east side, again, it's sort of ghosted in there, okay? On the east side, there are these two dry wells, and then there's a rectangular box that has an elevation. Just above that is the ghost of the existing.
Okay, I see it now.
Called out a 35-7.
Okay, thanks.
My apologies, if I had thought this was an issue, I would have made sure that you get the existing survey. What I'll do is, you know, just to make sure though, let's, we'll get copies of the existing surveys to you so you don't have to squint.
Because I was there today, and I thought that the house was appropriate for the street, the area, all of that. And if this house is not going to be significantly larger in terms of taking up more, more side yard or requiring significantly more setbacks, then, you know, I'm fine with it as well.
And I appreciate that. Again, we're trying to, we're trying to build a traditional house, so that's a good thing in my book, anyway.
Okay, I know Frank is waiting, I'm not sure whether he wants to add a few comments.
Frank Greenwald, Architect for the Applicant. Basically.
Swear you in, you cannot state your address?
Frank Greenwald, Architect for the Applicant, 295 Main Street, Sag Harbor.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, then give us your comments.
Basically, just, I would just reiterate what John has so graciously explained to everyone. I think the big issue here, and it's not just this particular application, is, you know, do we want the town, the houses along the beach in the town of Southampton to have some variety, you know, or do we, we're sort of headed down this path of all of the new houses being flat roof, two-story, modern boxes, because that's sort of the easiest thing to conform to with regard to this vertical envelope that we have. You know, and I think the diversity of having traditional homes and contemporary homes together along that corridor is important. And I think the only way to get a real traditional home there is to have some relief from the maximum roof line. So that's basically what we're asking for.
Okay, all right, appreciate your comments. Any other, any questions from members of the board?
I have a question, Frank. Do you know what the ceiling height is of the attic? It looks like there's a small attic on the plans.
There is a small attic, four and a half, four and a half feet or so. And it sort of varies because that particular section is taken in one spot. But you can see, you can see where the roof lines come down, it would be virtually nothing. I think the maximum would be is four and a half feet.
Okay, just, you know, just that, that always matters to the board in terms of stories and habitable space.
Yeah, no, it definitely would not be habitable.
Okay, any other questions? Is there anyone from the public who is waiting to be heard on Zoom in connection with the application? This is for 1206 Flying Point Road in Watermill, the application of 1206 Flying Point Road LLC. Want to be heard, this will be the time.
I, I'm sorry, I had one more thing to add. John, I saw in here that you included a letter of non-jurisdiction from the, from Conbord, set for this application?
Yeah, that makes sense. It's on the other side of a structure that existed in 93, 92, 93, and their jurisdiction would be, you know, title.
Across the street, across the street, right?
Cross the street, yeah, there's nothing on this side, thank you, yeah. That's in there, oh, that's good, okay, great, yeah. Right, isn't, I think I'm right about that. I mean, you know, it would be one thing if it was, if freshman was title, and that was, that the road was there and.
Yeah, that's, that's what I thought it was. I thought it was because they owned a little parcel across the street.
The road was there, clearly was there in 1993. I'm really dating myself, but you'll probably remember in Woody Allen movie, which he's, he's driving down that Flying Point Road in a Volkswagen Beetle, and that's like mid-'70s, what was that, it's the one, Annie Hall.
Charlie, did you say no one's waiting?
I see no hands.
No hands, okay, all right. Mike, it's yours.
Okay, so we will close the public hearing and keep it open for any written submissions. What is our date now, Katie, or?
Written subs for 30 days till 9/21 with a decision on 10/1.
So we'll keep it open for written subs until September 21st with a decision for October 1st.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Mr. Hahn?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Scott Hill?
Aye.
You're both aye, thank you both, have a good rest of your night.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Good night.
Item two on the agenda is Almonds LLC, 28 Bayview Drive East in New York, Suffolkian Tax Map 900-9-2-66. Applicant requests relief from Town Code 330-11, Residential District's Table of Dimensional Regulations for a principal rear yard setback of 25.3 feet, where 30 feet is required, in Town Code 330-84D, pyramid height for an encroachment in the amount of 2,983.3 cubic feet, 1,690.2 cubic feet on the west side, 1,293.1 cubic feet on the east side, all for a proposed two-story dwelling and any other relief necessary.
The board has jurisdiction.
Good evening, Bruce Anderson, swearing in, if you can state your name and address.
Bruce Anderson, Suffolk Environmental Consulting, Main Street, Bridgehampton, for the applicant.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth or nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay, then tell us about the application.
Okay, I just want to start with, with the relief requested. This is a house, there's an existing house, it's an improved property, a bulk-headed waterfront parcel that benefits from a CO. And the existing house is setback from the rear lot line, which is Bayview Drive, by 25.3 feet. And the proposed house, the house we seek to construct, will maintain that same setback. So I believe we benefit from continuance with respect to rear yard setback. So we are, however, requesting a zoning variance pursuant to 330-84D for the construction of a new single-family dwelling. The requested pyramid non-conformity would total 2,983.3 feet, which would consist of 1,293.10 cubic feet on the east side of the house and 1,684.48 feet on the west side of the house. As I said, this is an existing property, it's improved with a one-story, single-family dwelling with deck constructed in 1970. The subject parcel contains 11,600 square feet and is located in an R10 zoning district. The existing, as I said before, the existing dwelling, that rear yard setback is non-conforming because 30 feet would normally be the setback in an R10 zone. It's part, this parcel's part of a waterfront community known as Bay Point. And Bay Point actually contains 238 lots, most of which are 10,000 square feet or in some cases, less in area. Because the Bay Point area is zone R10, it goes with individual side yard setbacks of 10 feet and a total side yard setback of 25 feet. So that the majority of the developed lots, which is nearly all of it is developed, and I don't, I'm not aware of any vacant lots, actually. Any two-story house meeting side yard setbacks would display non-compliance with respect to the pyramid law, which, as we know, is adopted back in 1992 and subsequently modified for various floodplain reasons, et cetera. Or there's a number of parcels, and quite numerous parcels, that benefit from, with respect to variance relief. We have attached a zoning analysis that identifies the adjacent waterfront parcels benefiting from zoning relief from the pyramid law. And when you go through those decisions, you'll see a wide range of variance given that range between 5,298 cubic feet to as little as 339 cubic feet. So in this application, we are requesting a total of 2,983.3 cubic feet, which places us squarely within the range of relief granted for this area. We would, again, maintain the same rear yard setback as the existing. And it's important to note that we comply with all other dimensional setbacks in this R10 zone. We have filed applications with the Conservation Board, which we expect will be approved as we comply with the dimensional setbacks pertaining to bulk-headed properties. We already benefit from a letter of non-jurisdiction granted by NYSDC because the property is bulk-headed and has been bulk-headed since the adoption of their title at land law in 1977. We also fall within the town's high priority area pursuant to the CPF Water Quality Improvement Plans, and the applicant has proposed to install an alternative IA outs septic system that complies in all respects with the town's regulations that, at Section 123-52, which deals with alternative septic systems. Likewise, we will comply with the town's stormwater management regulations. And finally, the, the house would be elevated suitably as to comply with the applicable FEMA regulations. We submit that the variance would not cause an undesirable change in the neighborhood as a proposed dwelling is consistent with other similar dwellings in the neighborhood, and it's quite similar, in fact, to the contemporary house directly next door. We are, again, within the well, the range of similar pyramid setbacks granted throughout this area. We submit the benefits cannot be achieved without a variance because the lot width is limited to 75 feet. And although the dwelling conforms with all setback regulations, including side yard setbacks, any proposed two-story house would run afoul of the variance restrictions. We submit the variance, which is or not substantial relationship to the area, the lot, the width of the lot, and the size of the existing dwelling. The granting of variance will not have an adverse effect on the physical environmental conditions of the neighborhood because we comply with virtually all zoning restrictions, all environmental restrictions, and all floodplain restrictions. So in sum, we submit the benefit of the applicant, if the requested determination is granted, outweighs any detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community. The benefit to the applicant is the ability to construct a new dwelling, and we submit there is no detriment to the neighborhood or community. I will answer any questions you may have.
Bruce, Bruce, keep talking. For some reason, I can't seem to find my survey. How many square feet is the lot?
The lot is 11,611 square feet.
Okay, what's the dimensions of it?
It is 75 feet on the road. It is 138 feet on the westerly side lot line, which extends to the bulkhead or the high water line. It is 171.28 feet on the easterly side lot line, which is from the road to the water.
All right, so listen, as far as I'm concerned, the lot seems to be somewhat constrained, you know what I mean? And I think this is a good application as far as the pyramid height and all that, so you don't. I don't have a problem.
And you're getting rid of the existing sanitary right up on the water and moving it back to the street.
That is right, I should have, I should have mentioned that.
It's good as far as I'm concerned.
I have no issues with it either.
I have no issues with it. Okay. Any other questions to members of the board, or Katie?
No, I'll be interested to hear if there's anybody here. We did get two letters in opposition.
We did. Is there anyone from the public who is waiting to be heard in connection with the application of Almonds LLC? This is for 28 Bayview Drive East in New York.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
We can hear you.
Okay, fine.
We just can't see you right now.
Oh.
Click on video.
Yeah, I'm doing it. I got you. All right, my name is Regina Umansky, I sent a letter objecting. Oh, you want me to?
You have to swear in, you can state your.
Okay.
Mrs. Umansky, your address?
Your address.
Oh, I can't hear you.
26, are you 26?
24 Bayview Drive East, Sag Harbor, New York.
Okay, and do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, and so you're a next-door neighbor?
Yes.
Okay.
I am to the west.
Okay.
And over the years, we've been living here, this was a resale. We bought it after the house was constructed. And back in 2018, I was here, and there was a storm, and the entire backyard flooded with seawater, and it took many hours for it to dissipate. It also went up to the house as well. And if there is a pool in this area that you're proposing, it's going to be flooded with salt water. Also, during this period of time, the water overflowed into my yard and killing a number of plants and bushes. It took a long time for it to go recede back into the cove. Then during Sandy, the water came up to the house. I wasn't living here, but the previous owner I played bridge with, and she told me that she had water in her bedroom, in her living room and dining room area. They hired a local carpenter, and the water seeped as high as three feet on the sheet rock. All the floors had to be taken out, and he replaced them. And I just don't think the pool is in the correct spot. It's going, it's in, a subject to water coming in from the cove. Also, it's, I noticed that where the pool is located, it's going to be very visible from my property too. And I feel that's an infringement of my privacy. With me here is Charles Canavan, a neighbor. And I know he has a number of questions to ask. And also. ask, and also perhaps you'd like to sign him then, and?
Yep, I have to swear in, if you can state your name and address.
Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Yep, you can state your name and address.
My name's Charles Canavan, thirty Bayview Drive East, Sag Harbor, New York.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and you're an adjacent property owner as well?
Yes, I'm on the east side of the property.
Okay. And would you like to tell us?
Well, I just think it's absurd that on a lot that's seventy-five feet wide, somebody wants to triple the size of the house that's going on the lot. The lot, the house that is there now fits perfectly. This is, seems to me just an abomination, a money-grabbing attempt at buying the most inexpensive lot they can and putting the biggest possible house on it that is in violation of all the rules that we have abided by over the years. The pyramid rule is a good idea, these setbacks are a good idea, open skies, open views, this will make it look a lot more like the Bronx. And these have been granted before, there's a smattering of them in the neighborhood. These were mistakes, that was poor judgment and poor choice, and the last thing we need is more of them towering over our homes, our beautiful modest homes here. It's outrageous, it's a ridiculous request.
Okay, thank you for your comment.
What about the square footage?
Yeah, they're, they're asking for thirty-five hundred square feet in a, in a Zillow ad on a seventy-five foot wide lot. That's outrageous. Just because it was done before in the area doesn't mean it's right, it doesn't mean it should be continued.
Is the house that exists right now, is it a one-story? Is that why it's so much bigger?
Yes.
Yes.
Are there other two stories in the vicinity? How, is your house two stories?
Yeah, my house is two stories and abides by the pyramid law.
Okay.
Which I, which I knew I wanted a certain house, I needed a certain lot, so I built the law, built the house according to the, to the regulations, as did my neighbor on the east side. If you want a thirty-five hundred square foot house, go get an acre or two on the water. Don't put it on a tiny lot, post and stamp lot, seventy-five feet wide, it would look outrageous. Just trash the neighborhood, just because it was done before doesn't mean it was a good idea, doesn't mean it's safe.
You want to say deny, deny the variance?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. All right, I would, you have any other, are there any other comments?
Can I ask Charles a question? Is it Charles?
Sure.
Charles, as you, as your neighbor Regina mentioned about the water gap, do you, do you have any recollection of any problems also related to that?
Sure, the water has come up on certain occasions. I could hear.
Could you elaborate on that, please?
Well, I've seen the water come up to the backyard of, of this proposed house at twenty-eight, five, six times since I've been here in twenty-five years or so, right as Regina said, right into that house. And what they're proposing to do with the new house is go so much closer with the house than it is now, and it already flooded the house repeatedly as the house is now, further from the water. You go a little closer to the water, we'll just fill that swimming pool and fill that house with water, salt water. And if you want to go up higher and really violate the pyramid rule, we can really destroy the neighborhood. As they're asking for now, if this is granted now, it will be the tallest house on the block, it will look like something out of Trump Towers or something. It's just outrageous, it just shouldn't even be considered.
Well, we consider applications. When we have an application, we have public hearings, that's what this is for.
I understand.
Okay. Any questions, comments? I'm sorry, do you have anything else you want to add?
Yeah, we'd like this postponed adjourned because we need to have this seriously looked at with attorneys and architects.
Okay, well, there's going to be a written comment period, most certainly.
Yes.
Charles, are you saying that you want to retain an attorney and have the attorney come at an adjourned hearing, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
I will read from you, a variance decision granted to the house next door.
Which one, which house?
Irene Pletka, twenty-four Bayview Drive. That would be the house that Humanitsky resides in, and she purchased this house, but this is what she purchased. Applicant, this is a granted relief, seeks relief and obtained relief from the provisions of one three thirty-one fifteen D, three-tenths, four-tenths relief, accessory construction of a swimming pool, and section eighty-four dash, three thirty-eighty-four D pyramid height law to allow for the reconstruction of a dwelling on a nonconforming lot and any other relief necessary. This is for a two-story house on a similarly sized property. The footprint of the house on the decision is twenty-three hundred and change, which is what we have. The pool is between the house and the road, and so they had to get a variance for that. And I also want to point out that the height limitation of thirty-two feet, we're well under that, the overall height as measured from the street is twenty-two point seven five feet. So it's, we're of the view that we're, we're not seeking anything that's extraordinary, we're not asked for any coverage relief, we're not asking for any setback relief, we're ten feet, we're just slightly less than ten feet below the maximum height, so I just want the board to take notice of that. As to flooding, I don't know what the situation for Mr. Canavan is, but this is a house that is, we have a first floor elevation of nine feet and in a AE elevation six flood zone. So we're actually a foot higher on that than the floodplain, including its two-foot freeboard would require. We did that principally so that the septic system would function correctly, and so I'd like the board to take notice of that as well. Bruce, is there any relief for the deck and the swimming pool slash spa be requested? No, we were not asking for any relief on that. So that's all as of right? Yes, sir.
Can I mention something? My swimming, where I live at, next door, the swimming pool is on the street side, and it's between the two properties because apparently the woman who bought the house before us couldn't get a swimming pool permit for the waterside, and they said she must build it on the side property. So now mine is about, oh, about ten feet from the street between my neighbor's house, so it's not on the waterside.
Okay, well, apparently this, this pool does not require relief. It's as of right. Okay, any other questions or comments? Is there anyone else from the public who would like to be heard this evening in connection with the application of Almond's LLC or twenty-eight Bayview Drive East in New York? I see none. If not, I just want to mention, I know one of the neighbors wants to have, to retain an attorney, and so I think one initial question is whether we want to have that attorney give their submission in a written submission, or whether we want to keep the public hearing open and have, have them come back with their attorney. So I wanted to ask the other board members how you want to handle that.
I think I'd be fine with written submissions.
I would like to see the attorney. If somebody's going to go to the trouble of hiring an attorney, I think it's only fair for that person, if he wants the attorney to appear, to have an opportunity for the attorney to come.
Well, then again, they could have hired an attorney for tonight, they could have, they could have.
Well, maybe he didn't, for some reason, he didn't think, he wasn't given that option. I don't.
He participated in this, you know, in this meeting today, so, I mean, Bruce. Okay, other board members, where, where are you on this?
I'm fine with a written submission.
Okay. Jason?
I'm good with a written submission.
I'm good with written submission too. Okay, because we're going to be keeping it open anyway for written comments. All right, so Brian's leaning on the application, but he's not here. So I'll make the motion that we close the application of Almond's LLC except for written submissions. Katie, what is the date again on the written submissions?
Nine twenty-one with the decision ten-one.
Okay, so I would close, close the public hearing except for written submissions that will be due by end of business on September twenty-first, including any attorney submissions on behalf of the neighbors or the neighbors themselves, or anyone else who's watching this public hearing. And Bruce, for you as well, and we will have a decision ready on our October first meeting. Thank you greatly.
Second.
Second.
Okay, who did the first second, I'm not sure, it was either Mike or Pete?
Doesn't make a difference.
Doesn't make a difference, okay, Mr. Tyto.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Mr. Han.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair of the time. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Item, item three hundred, the agenda is Joseph M. Citron, thirty-nine Wakefield Road in Hampton Bays, suffocating tax map nine hundred dash two ninety-seven dash three dash forty-nine. Applicant requests for relief from the following provisions of the town code for various additions and renovations to a dwelling under construction on a nonconforming lot. One, for a front porch, three thirty dash one fifteen C continuance, for a principal front yard setback of twenty-eight point five feet where twenty-nine feet is existing. Two, for a rear porch, three thirty dash one fifteen C, for a principal minimum side yard setback of seven point one feet where seven point three feet is existing, and a principal total side yard setback of twenty-one point five feet where twenty-one point seven feet is existing. And three, for a roof renovation, three thirty dash eighty-four D pyramid height encroachment in the amount of one thousand nine hundred and sixty-three point six three cubic feet, one hundred and ninety-eight cubic feet on the north side, and seventeen sixty-five point six three cubic feet proposed south side. Additional sixteen hundred and fifty cubic feet on north side, and a hundred and fifteen point six three cubic feet south side, and any other relief necessary.
The board has jurisdiction.
Good evening.
Hi, my name is Jeff Gualist, one forty-seven Lakeshore Road, Rockhampton, New York.
Okay, and do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and you have someone with you who also needs to be sworn in?
We can swear them in now, sure.
I just want to swear you both in as well, if you can state your names and addresses for the record.
Hi, Patricia Citron, one fifty-four Springville Road, Hampton Bays, New York.
Okay, and sir?
Joseph Citron, one fifty-four Springville Road, Hampton Bays, New York.
And do you both swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, can you tell us about the application?
In reference to the application, thirty-nine Wakefield Road, it's pre-existing nonconforming property, originally sealed in nineteen seventy-nine with a pre-existing CO. The area zoning, the zoning area is R-twenty, where my, this particular lot has a total area of seven thousand four hundred and seventy-four square feet, so essentially a fifty-by-a-hundred-and-fifty sized lot. For the purposes of this application, I'd like to primarily focus on the pyramid relief. We are requesting relief off the front yard and side yard, which are, we would consider not to be substantial, but for this application, we included those, those encroachments as part of this application, but we're definitely want to focus primarily on the pyramid relief. Where on the north side, my client is asking for a total of a fifth, one thousand five hundred and sixty-seven cubic feet, where existing is a hundred and ninety-eight cubic feet, which, if you have the sketch in front of you, maybe I can pull up and share the screen.
Jeff, this is for a one-story dwelling?
Yes, this is a one-story dwelling. Not sure if you can see it, but I am sharing this.
Yeah.
Okay. The existing, existing house, I believe, was about around six hundred square feet when my clients originally purchased it. They applied for building permits and were issued building permits December twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen for the alterations to the roof, as well of, as well as interior renovations to the existing house. To be fully transparent, the house was basically in a bad shape. And my clients came in and requested the permit to kind of uplift the neighborhood and also give the house itself a little bit of a facelift. Now, as far as the, the permit is concerned, my clients did apply and were approved and were issued a permit for essentially what we see now. Around January, late February, actually, late January. Late January, excuse me. Building inspector David Kanji came to the site for a framing inspection and noticed that the roof line might be encroaching in pyramid. And after further investigation, did come to the conclusion that it is encroaching far more than what was originally pre-existing, which is why we're in front of you today. So I'd like to reiterate, my clients did went and obtained the building permits for the work that is, that was started, and were issued the permit via the principal building inspector at the time, which was Dennis O'Rourke, but this encroachment for one reason or another was missed, and hence the project was stopped since late January. So the house itself currently sits under a tarp, it has been sitting, obviously because of COVID, not much work can be done, and obviously, since we need, we do need to grant or just need the approval of this variance before they can proceed with the rest of the job itself. I'd also like to mention, the house as it is, is twenty, is twenty feet in total height, where obviously Times South End permits up to thirty-two feet. The square footage of the house is a total of about thousand, a thousand square feet, which includes a rear screened-in porch, which is also part of the application that was later on issued a permit. So I say all of that primarily to state that this is clearly a modest-sized house, and because of the size of the lot, there's extreme amounts of hardship in regards to zoning. So we are in front of you, asking for relief for both the south side and the north side of the property in regards to pyramid. And once again, I'll state the encroachment on the front yard setback of about six inches and about two inches on the side yard setback as well. I wanted to pass the, the floor to my client so they can kind of give you a brief, a brief history of what they've had to endure with this particular property.
Hi.
Hi. So we, we purchased this house last year after, it took about a year, we looked at it two years ago, it took a year for us to close. We finally closed last September. We hired Jeff as our permit expediter, and then we hired a architect. We paid the architect six thousand dollars to come up with these plans, our original idea was just to add a screened-in porch. The plans were done, they were handed in, everything was approved, we built the house exactly to the specs of the plan, and then when we had the framing inspection, we were told that it was built illegally. So then Jeff got us a meeting, we wanted to know what happened and how did this, how did that happen, when we did everything by the book, and we met with, who was the head inspector at the time?
Mike Menacasa.
We, we met with the head inspector, Mike Menacasa, and he basically told us to, to our face, oops, we missed it, we made a mistake, it's our fault, but there's really nothing we could do about it, now that it was brought to attention, you have to go in front of the zoning board, and he said that he was going to write a letter. And he said that he was going to write a letter explaining this, explaining what happened, but he said it was out of his control. And you can just imagine our reaction with it. And then that happened like a month before COVID. And then once COVID hit, nothing was getting accomplished. So now that the house has basically been sitting rotting for seven, eight months. And it's just been very, very frustrating, especially since, like I said, we did everything by the book. We didn't cut any corners, and everything, all the plans that we handed in got approved by the town.
Well, I appreciate the fact that you got permits. I do. And I think the professionals that you relied upon, you know, they unfortunately did not understand that what was being constructed needed variance relief.
That's inclusive of the building problem.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Building Department played a role in this. They missed the whole thing too.
Could I ask you, was your architect a local architect?
Where was he?
The architect is from Holtsville, done multiple projects in the town with him previously. Never ran into an issue before, but obviously, the building department is in place as a safeguard for mistakes by local design professionals.
And people make mistakes, and I get that. Just looking at it, and I drove by as well, it is a very narrow lot. So it was bound to have issues. And it's unfortunate that all of this happened to you both, and I sympathize with that. I do. If the building department would have caught it, you at least wouldn't have had partial construction and had to put a tarp and then on top of that, COVID, delaying everything for months and months and months. So you're here to rectify it, and I appreciate that.
Right.
As for the relief, the relief, in my view, in the scheme of things, is fairly modest in terms of the setback relief. The only relief that is on the larger side is the pyramid relief. But even on the larger side, I mean, it's, yeah, it's less than 2,000 cubic feet altogether.
For one story.
For one story, yeah. But it's less than 2,000, which, in my view, is something that we fairly routinely grant.
Has any neighbors given any comments?
With respect to the neighbors, we actually do have a neighbor right next door on the south side who's actually building a new construction, who has no concern and has been pretty friendly with my client. So as far as our understanding is, we don't have any complaints from any neighborhood, nor do we believe that the project itself is going to have any adverse impact on the neighborhood.
I have no problem in this application, I got to tell you. They came, they got the permits, and we seem to have a problem down in the building department, so I have no problem with this application.
No problem either.
We're in the same boat. It was a good faith mistake. No problem here.
Yeah, relying upon professionals and the town. Okay. Any other questions or comments from members of the board? Is there anyone who would like to be heard this evening in connection with the application of Citron for 39 Wakeman Road in Hampton Bays?
I see no hands.
No hands, okay. So I have a lead on this one. I will move that we close the application this evening except for written submissions through September 21st at end of business. And we will have a decision ready at our October 1st meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Han.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Toddhill.
Aye.
Chair of the side. Thank you all for your comments, and I wish you all the best.
Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, item 40, agenda is Peter and Nancy Manfredonia, 192 Washington Heights Avenue in Hampton Bays, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-186-164. Applicant request for leave from the town code 330-115C continuance for a principal rear yard setback of 22 feet where 41.5 feet existing to legalize a screened porch addition constructed without the benefit of a building permit.
The board has jurisdiction.
Good evening, Susanna. Just have to swear you in. I don't know if you're muted. Seems to indicate you're muted.
I'm muted.
Okay, if you can state your name and address.
Susanna Herman, N Consultants, 1319 North Sea Road, Southampton.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth or nothing about the truth?
I do.
Can you tell us about the application?
Okay. The application is for an existing screened porch. Can I go ahead and share my screen? There we go. Can you see that?
Yep.
Okay, so it's for this existing screened porch here. The screened porch is 314 square feet. It was constructed without a permit a few years ago, although we did recently receive a building permit for it. But then it was discovered that it was issued in error. It came to light because we submitted an application to the building department for this small, one-story addition. It was only, what, 142 square foot addition. And when we submitted that application, the building department pointed out that the screened porch had never gotten a permit. So we submitted an application for the screened porch, and they issued a permit for that. But then when we went to close out the building permit and applied for a certificate of compliance for the addition, the building department realized that they should not have issued this building permit for the screened porch, because this is in an R20 zoning district, and there's a 60-foot rear yard setback requirement. The screened porch was constructed over an existing concrete patio several years ago. The house itself is pre-1957. We have a pre-existing certificate of occupancy. It's obviously an undersized lot in the R20 zoning district at only 7,732 square feet. The lot's only 50 feet wide. So this is the only location on the property where you could possibly construct any type of addition or screened porch to achieve these benefits. It is not visible from the road. The existing house is actually set back pretty far from the pavement. Pavement's actually all the way out here. It's 64.5 feet from the front property line to the front of the house. So the screened porch is not visible at all from the street. On the north and south property lines, there's stockade fences which provide screening. It's also a very wooded area. I have some additional photos. This is the view from the street. As you can see, when you're standing on Washington Heights Avenue, you can barely see the house. It's a very modest screened porch onto a modest house. The existing house is 987 square feet. It's another view, looking from sort of the back corner of the lot. You see the stockade fence to the south.
Does that shed have a CO?
Yes, the shed is on the pre-existing CO.
Excellent, okay.
Otherwise, I wouldn't have shown you that picture. This is the view from the back property line towards the lot that is behind here. So this is the rear lot line. As you can see, it's a heavily, heavily wooded lot. This lot that's behind this subject property, which is the affected lot, is 80,000 square feet, and it's heavily wooded. And I don't know if you can see the house in the background, back here, through the trees. My estimate is that it's about 230 feet away from the property line. So they're not impacted. This house is currently under construction. This is the view from the back, the rear property line to the screened porch. This is an arrow view. Here's the subject property here, and this is the wooded lot behind here, behind the rear property line. And the house that's currently under construction is much closer to Channing Cross than it is to the rear, up in this area here. So I don't see that there's any impact on any of the neighboring properties and/or any impact on the neighborhood in general. It's a very constrained lot, just over 7,732 square feet and only 50 feet wide. So I'm fairly confident that if they had come to the zoning board of appeals for a variance for this screened porch, that it would have been approved. There's no environmental impacts. We conform to coverage requirements. And as I said, it's very small. It's only 314 square feet. It's a small house. So I think the impact is very, very minimal. This is a view from inside the porch, looking back into the woods.
So I just wanted to ask, if you can give us more detail. I know that there was a building permit applied for, but it was the screened porch that was applied for. Maybe clarify for you. It was applied for after it was built, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and do we know who built the screened porch? And I know you said it was several years ago. Do you have more information as to who installed it?
I don't. I can find out from the owner. I think it was, you know, a handyman-type construction operation.
Okay, so question of members of the board. Do you want to have the owner come in and do the process of putting up this porch?
These guys have owned the property since 1996, right, Susanna?
I believe that's correct, yeah.
So did they put it up?
Yes, it was this homeowner.
Okay.
Could you say that again, Suzanne? Did they put it up?
It was when this homeowner did own the property at the time that the screened porch was constructed. They didn't realize that they needed a building permit for a screened porch. Obviously, they should have.
Typically, when we have as-built, we want information from someone who's familiar with the facts and circumstances as to how those structures went up. So while I appreciate the fact that it may not have an impact on the neighbors, nevertheless, because we have so many as-built structures in these kinds of situations, and I understand that there was building department error, they issued a building permit, but that was after the fact. That was after it went up. In fact, it was a contractor who put up the screened porch. They should have known to get a building permit or had the owner deal with it. So the question is whether we want to have the owner come in.
I think as a matter of practice, we should hear from them. That's just me.
I agree. Yeah, I mean...
Okay.
I agree with Jason. I think it's a reasonable request.
Okay, all right. So it looks like we want to have the owner come in and/or...
How about, Adam?
I'm sorry?
This thing's been there for years, and the guy's building a new house off the back there? To my knowledge, he doesn't have a problem. He knew the porch was there to begin with. Why don't we, instead of having them come in, can we do it in a written submission instead?
Do you want to make that your new practice?
Yeah, it's...
Listen, listen, this board never sets precedents. Each case has its own merits.
Well, what would be the nature of the written submission? I mean, for the owner to, what would the submission look like?
Owner was going to say it got built. They didn't think they needed to build it. What'd the building department have to say about this? Is it another building department issue?
They, the porch was built without a permit in place. They issued a permit after the fact.
After the fact.
Okay.
But they issued the permit though. They issued the permit.
Right, and it's built, it's built, you know, it's strapped, it's got the proper foundations and everything. It's built to code. It passed inspection. They were all ready to issue the certificate of compliance for everything, and then they realized it was set back.
Was it built in 2019 when the permit was issued?
It was already constructed prior to that.
I know, but that's what I'm saying. Had it been there for 10 years before, or had it been there for six months?
More than six months, yeah. I don't know exactly.
I thought it was about seven years.
Yeah.
That's what I thought. Well, so it's not a building department mistake.
Suzanne, I'm a little confused. It says a builder permit under building zone ordinance. It says dated April 20th, 2020. Screen location, we know the location, screened porch and OG shower demo. Permit approval subject to field inspection. Work not to start until executive order addressing COVID-19 is lifted. So I don't see any permit or...
That's a permit after it was fully built.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, I mean... The whole thing is, wasn't done right.
Listen, I'll remove my request for submission. Go ahead, drag him in.
Drag him in and zoom.
Yeah, let's get some public flogging going on.
Well, consistency, consistency.
And not for nothing, but Suzanne, I would think that you would know that in something like this, that we would ask for the owner to be present, so, you know...
I think there's some health issues, so I was trying to avoid that, if at all possible, but...
All you have to be doing is doing it from his house. I could have to bring him anywhere.
I understand that.
Tell us in the first instance not to have it be adjourned so that he can tell us his story. So I don't think you can use the excuse of health issues.
She's not complaining.
I'm not. I...
I know, I know.
I did make the request that he, or recommendation that he should be here, and he really has a lot on his plate and asked that we try without. So I hear the board, and I understand there needs to be a public comment from the homeowner, so we will bring him in for public flogging. And I just, I hope there's no actual resistance to the issuance of the variance provided that an explanation is provided. Because I know what he's going to say, because is what he said to me.
We can guarantee that, Suzanne.
I just want to see if there was any substantive feedback in that direction.
And I don't think you should even say that to him, please. That all he has to do is come, and then therefore, once we hear his story, everything's going to be A-OK. We have to still make a decision based on all the facts. And I have to believe in this case.
Aside from whether he comes or he doesn't come, I don't have a problem with the application.
Okay, but we still need him to come.
Three more.
Let's pick a date.
Well, before we do that, just want to ask if there's anyone from the public who is waiting to be heard in connection with the application of Manfredonia. This is the 192 Washington Heights Avenue in Hampton Bays.
I see no hands.
Okay. All right, so then the only other thing is our schedule. So Suzanne, I believe our next available meeting isn't the next meeting, but it's the following meeting, the second meeting in September.
Okay. So that would be, what, the 13th?
17th. 17th.
Okay.
All right, but Helen, you're the lead, so I'll let you...
We're going to keep the public here open and bring in the owner for our second meeting in September, which is September 17th.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Han.
Aye.
Toddhill.
Aye.
Chair of the side. Thanks so much, Susanna. Have a good night.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks.
All right, next, I... Next item on the agenda is under re-advertised applications is Donald T. Witkowski and Robert J. Wallace, Gioli and Chen applicants. 26 Georgian Lane in Watermill, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-115-3-4. We don't have jurisdiction on this, Katie?
It's re-advertised. Candace is yet to read?
Yes.
Yep, read it.
Okay. Applicant requests we leave for the following provisions in the town code. One, for the proposed two-story dwelling, 330-115C. Continuance for a principal front yard setback of 30 feet where 47.8 feet is permitted. And for a principal rear yard setback of 27 feet where 36.9 feet is permitted for the dwelling. Two, for the proposed accessory building, pool house. 330-76D placement of accessory building structures and uses. And 330-83C yards to allow the proposed accessory building pool house to be located within the required total side yard for the principal dwelling. And three, for the proposed swimming pool with attached patio, 330-76D placement of accessory buildings and structures and uses. And 330-83C yards to allow the proposed swimming pool to be located within the required total side yard for the principal building and a non-conforming lot and any other relief necessary.
For heads jurisdiction?
Good evening.
Good evening. Applicant David Gil Martin Jr., Foulfords, 50 Station Road, Watermill, New York. Can I ask my friend Charles to let in Adam Weintraub, who is the architect, and Eric Giulioli, who is the property owner?
Yes, sir.
Who is the architect, David?
Thank you. I don't know if they have their.
Yep.
They have their video on, but there's Eric. Good evening. This application was re-advertised as a result of a meeting between Mr. Giulioli and Ms. Chen and the neighbors. And the application comes as a result of modifications to the original plan that were agreed upon by the entire neighborhood and Mr. Giulioli and Ms. Chen. So tonight, we're looking for the relief necessary to demolish the existing structure and construct a single-family dwelling and a pool, and a pool house. Candace, can you allow me to share documents?
You may.
Charles does that.
Sure, go ahead.
Sorry, Charles.
My son, yes.
This is the survey and I've marked it up a little. The area that's highlighted in blue is that area that we're looking for the relief for. So you see, it's not, you know.
I don't see anything, David.
I don't see anything. Just seeing the usual cast of characters.
I thought it was a little better than John Bennett. How about now?
Not yet.
Do you have permission to share?
Not getting the, Charles, I'm not getting the panel that allows me to do it. You don't see it now?
No.
All panelists have the right to share.
Yeah, usually we see that thing that says, you know, David Gil Martin sharing screen.
All right, I'm hitting share screen. Man, it's not.
Do we have that?
There we go.
There we go. So I am a little bit better than John Bennett.
Don't flatter yourself.
Yeah, that's.
Come on, he couldn't share.
You never share this.
Here's the, this is the survey. I've marked it up. You'll see the areas that are highlighted in blue that are outside of the area. And those are the areas that we are looking for relief for. One of the challenges with this particular lot, you'll see how it's oddly shaped. And this area in here really creates a challenge because we have the front yard setback here, side yard setback here. So it really pushes our improvements to the property to the narrowest part of the lot. And that's why we need the front and rear yard relief. You know, I'd also note that the property is 24,648 square feet in an R60 zoning district. So the, you know, the hub zonings in 72 and then 84 are really what created the issue here. So that was our challenge, was to try and fit a relatively modest structure here with a pool while dealing with this oddly configured lot. The, I have an aerial. Let me guess, I gotta erase that. So this is the. erase the markings here. This is the, this is the neighborhood. And if you see, there are several very large houses on either side of us. A large house here on the water, one that's across the street. These two houses, this is an older aerial, but this house is improved. I have a picture of it and it is, it is pretty large. And then this house is currently under construction and it is pretty large. So the character of this neighborhood is two-story, very large houses. One of the accommodations that we talked about with the neighbors was shifting our proposal back, which is what we did. And if you look here, there's an open, I don't want to call it a field, but there's an open area that's connected to the lot in front of us that allowed us to come back and not, not really impact, this is, this is a garage here, not impact the people in the neighborhood. I think another one of the significant points or compelling points here is the screening. In this, in this. Make sure I can annotate. So here, there are, and I have pictures of them that I'll follow up with. There's a significant amount of trees. And you'll see them also here. That screen, what we're doing to our, from our, from our east is also, and I'll have a picture of it to show you in a minute. This area in here is a mature hedge line that will also screen the proposed new house from view from people traveling down Georgian Lane. So if I can show you. Really awkward doing this in, without seeing you in person where you can really show the documents. Sorry, I just got out of the share screen section.
It looks like the proposed house is really not significantly more, looks like the existing house was also outside of the setbacks.
It was. This is the, this is the house that is on Rose Hill Road that's currently under construction that replaced what was a pretty modest, single-family dwelling. And then this is the screening. This is the screening looking down that driveway that's to the east. And it's, as you can see, some really mature trees there that provide a significant amount of screening. The house that's. This is the house that's directly across the street on Georgian Lane. Another very significant house. Finally, this is the, this is the hedge along Georgian Lane that will provide again some significant screening. That's probably between eight and nine feet now. And I think that that's compelling to screen off, screen off what exactly we're doing.
And David, you said that the neighbors all got together with the owner and this is what?
Yeah, this was what came out of it after a long discussion. The other thing that I should mention to you is that there is currently a greenhouse that will be demolished as part of the, part of this application. So you can look at it as though the greenhouse is being replaced by the pool house.
The board granted variances for the greenhouse.
Sorry? Yes, the board granted variances for the greenhouse. That is correct. And the pool house will be shifted away from that front yard there and more towards the rear yard. When we look at substantiality of our request, the variances are all under 50%. But as this board knows, you're required to look at the totality of the circumstances. And I would say the totality of those circumstances include, again, the screening, the fact that 11.6% lot coverage is being used here where 15% is permitted. So we're building less than we're entitled to. The open field behind provides, provides some comfort to the people to the north. And again, we do have the neighbor's support here. With respect to any environmental considerations, as this board well knows, it's a type 2 variance and under SECRA, DEC has categorically determined that they will not have a negative impact on the environment. And moreover, this property will be required to install an IA system here. With respect to the hardship that's encountered by the applicant, I believe it's the configuration of the lot here combined with the rezonings that have taken place over the years, which have made this lot non-conforming in size. Those two factors really make it challenging to do anything on this lot and meet zoning. So with that, we can answer any questions. Again, we have the architect here and Mr. Giulioli is here. And we'll try and answer any questions, but we respectfully ask that you grant our request.
The first thing I just wanted to mention, David, is I'm always happy to hear when neighbors and applicants are communicating and trying to work out their differences. That's always a good thing. Next one to mention, we did get comments on the revised application from Dennis O'Rourke, Chief Building Inspector. I'm not sure if you received copies of any of these comments.
Yes, we did and we responded. He has plans and he also has a pyramid law analysis that was done by the architect. So we've, I think we've satisfied Mr. O'Rourke with those.
Has he reviewed them or he just has them?
I know that he has them and they do show that we comply with the pyramid law.
Okay. So I know you have Adam and Eric both waiting to be heard. So whoever would like to go first, raise your hand.
Mr. Giulioli's a lawyer, so he does not need to be sworn in.
Okay, okay. All right. So Mr. Giulioli, you're next.
Yes, good evening. Thank you for your time tonight. And yes, I just, the only thing I can really add is to confirm what David Gil Martin said, which is that we had submitted proposals and some of our neighbors asked to meet with us. In fact, we ended up meeting with all of the neighbors that are around here. And the principal concern that was voiced was that at the time we had about a 25-foot setback from the front yard in the original proposal. And they had some concerns about that. So we addressed that by moving the house to 30-foot setback and we lowered the profile of the roof so that it's now, there's a dormer window there. And the additional considerations that he requested, that if there's any damage to the road during construction, that we would commit to repair those at our expense. And we have done so. We committed in writing to do that. They also asked to see our proposed landscaping plan and we agreed to provide that when it's ready. It's not ready yet. We intend to increase the amount of vegetation and not decrease it. So in addition to the vegetation that David pointed to, we will, we will be adding to that to increase the privacy, both from our perspective and the perspective of the neighbors. So I think, David, that's all unless you think.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you very much again. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Your comments are great. We appreciate it. Adam?
I swear to tell the truth. Adam Weintraub, 799 Greenwich Street, New York, New York. Swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth. I'm merely here to answer any questions and just to reiterate that working with the Giolli's and the neighbors, we were able to go back and forth and I think achieve a sensible plan and sensitive to the neighborhood. And I appreciate your consideration.
No problem. So David, just one thing I wanted to mention is that the screening, you or your client have any objection to a condition being placed in any decision that that screening be maintained?
Oh, no, not at all. Not at all.
Okay. All right. Well, a lot of effort was put into this and I greatly appreciate it. I'm not sure whether any neighbors who are going to want to be heard, but it's always a positive development when I hear applicants and neighbors communicating and trying to work things out when they have concerns.
May I just ask a question? The screening that David showed, we will, we intend to maintain. We would intend to change the screening and actually increase it on the west side. But it'll be different. In other words, we will make changes on the west side just to be sure that the record reflects that, you know, we want to maintain the flexibility to change the screening on the west side in order to increase it. But it will change.
We were agreeing to the, to the east and the south side.
That's fine, that's fine. Yeah.
And there'll be a robust landscaping. And there'll be a robust landscaping plan here.
Yes.
For the neighbors here.
Okay. Do you, do you think you'll be able to submit the landscape plan before we have a decision or not?
I suspect, I suspect not, Chairman Grossman.
We have, we, I guess we've been working focused so much on the drawings and we've actually spent a lot of time to try to address the concerns of the neighbors. Gone back and forth with our architect quite a bit. So we haven't really focused on the landscaping plan. We don't have a landscape architect and we don't have, we were far behind, I'm afraid, on that.
That's all right. So I just want to make sure that we have the conditions clear to be consistent with what the understanding is between the applicants and the neighbors.
The screening is to the, to the east and the south, what I had highlighted in the presentation. So we will agree to maintain that. And then we've had some discussions with the neighbor to the west about providing, providing screening. He's a builder. He's a pretty sophisticated developer in the town. So we have agreed that we will sit and come to an agreement with him. I know him fairly well. So, so that, that will be done. But again, we'll agree to the, to the east and the south side, maintaining that.
Is that sufficient, Adam?
Yes. But I'm speaking for myself. Is everyone else okay?
For the board?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions to members of the board? Is there anyone from the public who is waiting to be heard on Zoom in connection with the application of Jaleli and Chen for 26 Georgian Lane Watermill?
I see no hands.
No hands. Okay. All right. So I have a lead on the application. We will, I would move that we close the application except for written subs, like our other applications, until September 21st and end the business. And we will have a decision ready on our October 1st meeting.
Second.
Oh, and I got to listen. The written subs will include, you know, any, well, actually, we can talk, well, it will include the, well, actually, Katie, I don't think we need anything. I think probably we already have it on the record in terms of the screen. So.
The written subs, it just remains open for all purposes.
For all purposes. Okay. Okay. All right. So we have a second. Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Haan.
Hi.
Mr. Daly.
Hi.
Mr. Tahill.
Hi.
Chair of the side. Thank you all for being here and thank you for all your efforts. I greatly appreciate it.
Thanks for your time tonight.
Thank you. Have a good night. Well, why don't we take a short break? We've been going for two hours. Second. Okay. All right. So we're just going to take a short break for a few minutes.
The agenda is German Rivera, 577 East Montauk Highway in Shinnecock Hills, Suffolk County Tax Map, 900-232-120. This is adjourned from our 86 meeting.
Yep. Who do we have on this application?
I'm sorry? You talking to me?
I think we have Linda Ruiz on us.
Yes.
Hi Linda, I just have to screen.
Okay.
Please state your name and address.
My name is Linda Ruiz. Business location is 76 West Montauk Highway, Hampton Bay, New York, 11946. I'm the agent for Mr. Rivera.
Okay. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
So if you can tell us about the application.
We're here today, we're asking relief for the town code 338-84D, which is the pyramid height, for an encroachment that is an amount of 115 cubic feet for a proposed second addition to an existing dwelling on a non-conforming lot and any other relief that's necessary, which I don't believe that there is anything because we're not increasing the size of the structure itself. We're just going up for the addition and we're in such a modest amount of the encroachment. This is why we're here.
Okay. Minimal relief.
Correct.
Minimal relief. I can't see how this could have any impact on any neighbors. Have you heard from any of the neighbors?
None. None at all.
Any questions to members of the board?
Nope.
Tiny relief.
Is there anyone from the public who would like, who is waiting to be heard on Zoom in connection with the application of Rivera? This is for 577 East Montauk Highway in Shinnecock Hills.
I see no hands.
So I just see this as being minimal relief for a second-story addition. So in any case, my case is yours.
Okay. We will close this public hearing, except for written submissions. We'll have those written submissions in by September 21st and we'll have a decision for you on the October 1st meeting.
Thank you.
Your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Daly.
Hi.
Mr. Haan.
Hi.
Kelly.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Tahill.
Hi.
Chair of the side. Thank you for being here. Have a good night.
You too. Thank you so much.
All right. Item seven on the agenda is Frank Franzes. All I have out of me is it's a reopened application. I have no other information.
Okay.
Yep. It's for 55 Alden Lane and we're looking for Sal Ione.
Yep. I see his name.
Yep. Hello?
Sal, see if you can share your video.
There we go.
There you go. Now unmute yourself.
You're still muted. Okay. All right. So I know this is, this was originally closed and then it was reopened. I believe I previously swore you in?
Yes.
Okay. So you're still sworn? And maybe you can update us as to where we are at the moment.
Yes, we were before the board approximately a year ago. And we were trying to get our wetland permits from the Town Conservation Board, which we've now finally gotten. As a result of those permits, they reduced our deck on the south side of the house, which reduced our pyramid relief request. We were previously requesting, my glass is 43 square feet or 1,044 cubic feet. And now because the deck has been cut back, we need 22 square feet and/or 715 cubic feet of relief for pyramid. So one-story residence being elevated to, for FEMA.
Okay.
So you're back to ask for less?
We're back to ask for less, yes.
Have you heard from any of your neighbors?
No.
Well, it's still very minimal relief. The last, last application was really minimal relief, but this is still to me pretty minimal pyramid though.
Yes.
And like I said in the last application, I had to really be convinced that this would have any impact on any of the neighbors.
Now, it's the area that we're talking about is on the south side of the residence, which is just Jason Wetlands.
Okay.
Better.
All right. So I, I think we just got all of these plans recently. So I think we just have, have to make sure the building department takes a look at them and confirms everything.
Okay. And as long as the building department's fine with them, we're good to go. But we're leaving open for submissions. So if the building department needs any plans or any submissions to be revised, then we would just need those revisions to be submitted and we're, and we're good to go.
Yes.
Any other questions to members of the board? Is there anyone from the public who would like to be heard this evening in connection with the application of Francis for 55 Alden Lane in Quayac?
I see none.
Okay. If not, Cornelius, it's yours.
I move to close the public hearing, leaving open for written submissions until September 21st with a decision on October 1st.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Haan.
Hi.
Mr. Tahill.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Daly. Mike, you got to turn your, you got to unmute.
That might help. Aye, aye, aye.
Okay. Chair votes on. All right. Thank you. Thank you for being here. I always appreciate when we have an application reducing the amounts of pyramid relief and wish you all the best with the project.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good night.
So have a good night.
All right. Moving on to item nine on the agenda, which is Michael Esposito and Louis Esposito, 730 Flanders Road in Flanders, Suffolk County Tax Map, 900-143-248. This is a holdover application. Multiple, multiple times.
Yep. Well, they were, I think we're in the process of SECR. So Linda, you can unmute yourself and give the board an update.
Yes, hi. The only update that I have at this moment is that my client has, is retained a new engineer, as I'm told. I'm just waiting for some paperwork to show proof of that. Once I do that, I'll be able to have a meeting with the engineer to go over what is needed and then go forth. So I'm going to ask the board if I could possibly have at least three months based upon I didn't receive any notice as of yet for the new engineer that was supposedly retained. But again, I didn't get proof of that to show me.
Okay. And this, this is just to revise your plans, right? And to get them to the planning department so they can figure out what the environmental impact is?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. So three months from now would be second meeting in November?
Okay.
I just don't know what the, what the date is on that.
The 19th.
19. Okay. Okay. So Brian is actually, according to my notes, got a key to lead on this application. He's not here. So I would move that we, oh, before I do that, I got to ask if there's anyone from the public. Well, any questions to members of the board? Is there anyone from the public who would like to be heard this evening in connection with the application of Esposito or 230 Flanders Road in Flanders?
I see no hands.
730.
No hands.
No hands. Okay. Then I would move that we adjourn the application of Esposito for all purposes until our November 19th meeting.
Thank you so much for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you. You too. Mr. Haan.
Hi.
Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Daly.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Tahill.
Hi.
Chair of the side. Thank you. Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Item 11 on the agenda is Valerie Siragano, 105 Edgmere Drive in North Sea, Suffolk County Tax Map, 900-32-112. It's a holdover.
Yep. Daphne?
Hi. Daphne Vaughn, Third Side Environmental Planning.
Hi, Daphne. Looks like I previously swore you in.
Yes, you have. There should be the builder with me as well, Jim Traynor, and also Tina Ross, who is Valerie Siragano's daughter.
Okay.
So I can update you to just reiterate that we're in a meeting, we submitted revised plans that show a reduction in the height of the house by six and a half feet from our initial proposal. We dropped down the requested amount of pyramid from 17,659.5 cubic feet to a total of 10,687.18 cubic feet. And about 2,600 square feet of that was existing, pre-existing non-conforming pyramids. So we overall reduced the pyramid by 6,972.32 cubic feet. And that was done by lowering the first floor elevation of the house by three feet. We relocated the house to six feet from the property line, which is currently 2.6 feet on the eastern side. We changed the roof pitch to the minimum that it could possibly be. And the ceiling height of the first floor has been reduced to eight feet from nine.
Daphne, it's still 10,000?
Yeah. So I, I spoke with the homeowner daughter who was on tonight. She was unable to be here at the last meeting because she had a power outage at her home in Connecticut. And Jim Traynor also had some issues. So basically, the whole board was not present at the last meeting and I did not have the, my, my, my partners in crime, so to speak, with me. So I have them tonight and I wanted both of them to be able to iterate to the board their, their piece.
Daphne, did you make any attempt to lower that number of 10,687 to something lower than that?
Not yet. There was not a clear sense from the whole board. There were two members that had said that they were, wanted us to reduce it further. Like I said, we were missing two members at the last meeting. So I just thought that it was a good idea for us to give you the complete story from everyone's point of view involved in the project.
But, but there was no attempt to reduce the number?
Not at this time. We've done some preliminary thoughts on how we could possibly come down anymore. I would request that you listen to the applicant and the builder.
All right.
Okay. Who would like to go first? The applicant and the builder?
I can.
You can? Okay. So I just have to swear you in. You can state your name and address.
My name is Tina Ross, 6 Chickadee Lane, Brookfield, Connecticut.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And are you the daughter, the daughter of the owner?
I am.
Okay. So you're speaking on her behalf in a way?
Yes, from my perspective. So thank you for hearing our requests and for allowing me to provide a quick history tonight. The property's been in my family for over 70 years. My dad grew up here. I've grown up here. My kids will continue to grow up here. It's, it's our home. There's generations of memories at this location. And unfortunately, the structure of the house itself is compromised because it's over 100 years old. So our goal would be to repurpose the property, to use the existing footprint to modernize. You should note, we should note that we've already put in an IA septic system. We'd like to add a modest size increase as various neighbors have done throughout the years in order to create this new home for our multi-generational family, which would add value, excuse me, to the neighborhood as well. And I appreciate your support in helping us achieve our goal.
Well, I appreciate that. Just so you understand, because the initial application was a large cubic feet pyramid relief, which is far more than we grant most of the time, we requested that the initial application be modified. The application has been modified. I'm not sure where the board members are in terms of the modified application. In any case, I do appreciate the fact that we're, that you're willing to address the concerns of the board. So Mr. Traynor, do you want to have me swear you in next?
Sure, sure.
You can state your name and address.
James Traynor, 40, Club Lane, Remsenberg, New York.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
So can you tell us a little bit about this application from your perspective?
Yep. I've been, I've been working in that community for quite a few years. Over the past 10 or 15 years, I've worked on that particular house on several different occasions. And like Tina had just explained, I believe the old foundation is brick. It's decaying. The house is basically crumbling down. There's no way you could really repair it without turning it into a complete restoration project, which would be, you know, ridiculously expensive and really wouldn't be fruitful anyway. The, what it, what it appears, and I don't, I don't know how far back, if this house was built 100 years ago, a 40-foot lot was probably okay. That might have been the case. But now I think that that 40-foot is, is the majority of their problem. If they were on a 45-foot lot, like some other houses in the community have, have been given variances on, then I think the relief would be a lot less. But there's no way they can be on a 45-foot lot. And they've been there, you know, the family's been there for, for so long. We've done quite a bit to try and do everything the house can form as much as possible, in my opinion, to the detriment of the my opinion, to the detriment of the design to the house, for the neighbors and everything else. I mean, we've got it down to a four and a half pitch on the roof, which decreases our height, but she's on iconic bay with eighty mile an hour windstorms, and we got a four pitch because we're trying to meet it, and it's not the most attractive. So how much further do we go to try and squeeze it to get down another thousand square feet? Is it going to really help the neighborhood all that much? I don't know. So we slid the house more to the center because we thought that would make it more conforming in another attempt to try and do as much as we could. And again, if somebody's got some ideas, we're open to anything else. Anything we can do, we're willing to do to try and get it as close as we can to what would be required to get approved. It does seem like there have been other properties in the area that have had large variances granted and approved in the past. I don't think we would be setting precedents in this case.
Well, I appreciate that. I will tell you that the vast majority of pyramid variances we grant are, I would say, five thousand cubic feet or less, obviously that's the vast majority. So whenever it's something that goes significantly above that, we scrutinize. And what we had originally was really, really above that. And so I appreciate the fact that you were working with the applicants and with Daphne to modify the project in order to reduce the pyramid relief. I'm not sure where members are as to whether majority are satisfied with the modified pyramid relief. I'm just not sure. We'll find out.
The only other thing that I would ask, and I don't know, maybe our mistake or my mistake in the beginning, but we thought in the original application that we were going to be looked at from the FEMA flood plain, so we didn't realize we were going to be that high. And the other question is, the maps, which I personally don't trust a hundred percent, that house only shows like a hundred feet out of being FEMA compliant. If that house was a hundred feet over, then we would be taking this reading from three feet higher, and our numbers would be so much different. And if I was going to put all of my money into that neighborhood, I would really want to be compliant, you know, as high as I could be. And they're losing that opportunity.
The house is actually seventy-eight feet to the concrete wall, which is acting as a bulkhead, and it's sixty-six feet to the flood zone boundary, which goes from an X to a VE eight. So it's not even an AE flood zone intermediary, it just goes from no flood zone to a VE eight, sixty-six feet away from this house.
So if that's off just a little bit in a bad storm, they're in trouble.
That's for the height, that's for the height of the structure.
That's for the first floor elevation, basically.
Correct. If that was the case, wouldn't the first floor elevation be at FEMA flood plain?
Yeah, but I don't think it matters for calculating pyramid.
It would, because if we were in a flood zone, then the pyramid would start at base flood elevation plus two, where here, we're starting at grade.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So that would actually be, if we were in a flood zone, it would buy us probably a lot of reduction in pyramid.
And how?
Sixty-six feet away from that.
So you're, are you building as if you're in a flood zone?
We're building, I believe it's slightly higher. Right now, the first floor elevation is at ten point four, and I think we're elevating it to twelve. Right, Jim? I think that's what.
No, no, I believe that what we have now is only eight inches out of grade or ten inches out of grade.
Yeah, so then it's, we're keeping the first floor elevation, so.
Oh, but then that takes away from your argument. If you're not even building it to FEMA, then you're, I was gonna say, if you're building it to FEMA compliance and you still have a pyramid, then you'd be encouraging state construction.
It's a VE eight, the flood zone, so we would have to be at an elevation of ten and would have to be built on piling. This does not have to be built on pilings, we are building it, if we're maintaining the existing first floor elevation, that's at ten. We were going up to, I think, fourteen at one point.
I don't understand. Are you, have you elevated it even though you're not in a flood zone?
It's, I don't think that we're elevating it anymore.
No, the original application, we had it elevated. Then we had, we lowered it because we're sixty-six feet out and we can lower it. I guess the thought from the homeowner's standpoint is, over sixty-six feet, they have to build a house that they would rather have had higher or out of the ground for safety issues, so they lose there. And because the lots granted a hundred years ago at forty-four, at forty feet, then their pyramid starts six inches above the first floor plate. So they're really getting, they're getting hit on both ends, and there's no way to really make it conform, even though they're trying to every way they can.
Well, other than making it a one-story, right?
Making it a smaller house.
I guess that, yes, that could be the answer, but looking at other variances that have been granted in that area in the past, and looking at that whole seashore row, there are many two-foot, I think there's a two-story house on a forty-five foot lot, two or three doors down. So it's not like it doesn't, it's not like it doesn't, it would look out of place, I don't think.
Ten thousand, ten thousand cubic feet of pyramid is not something that I would even consider agreeing to.
I wouldn't consider it either. I thought you were coming back, Daphne, with a lower number. I thought that was the purpose of today's meeting.
We made it very clear, Daphne, last time, that that was too much, and to come back with the same amount, you're wasting.
Well, two members made it clear, and there were two members missing, so that was, that's the problem, and.
Okay, well, we're gonna find out shortly where everybody else is.
Can I ask, can I ask one other question, guys? And I think ultimately, we're all trying to work to the same goal, an ending that's good for us and for you guys. We're all on, we're trying to get to a good ending. If ten thousand is too big, what is the driving number? What do we have to get to? Because from the customer's standpoint, every time I go back and say, okay, we gotta get the engineer and recalculate, we gotta get the architect and redraw, she's spending thousands and thousands of dollars to try and get, would you say, okay, if you got the seventy-eight hundred cubic feet, way to prove it? If you got the sixty-two, what is the number? And then?
Give us a few, give us a couple of minutes, all right? We'll let you know.
Okay, okay, okay.
And the one, two doors down was five thousand, four hundred and twelve cubic feet.
That's a good number.
That was a.
But that's, but that's on a forty-five foot lot.
You said there was one, two doors down, I just was telling you what it was at.
Right.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, ma'am, my point was.
It's a better number, it's not a great number, I'm sorry.
And Mr. Grossman told you earlier that this board is typically more agreeable to five thousand cubic feet or less.
Yeah.
So you're at ten thousand, you're not anywhere near the ballpark.
On the other hand, on the other hand, it is a very narrow lot, and it is a pre-existing, it was a pre-existing structure, and the applicant has put a fair amount of effort into cutting the amount of pyramid relief down significantly. The question is whether there is a majority of this board that can live with that number. And also, you know, I have to mention as well, I'm a little bit concerned that the property is sixty-something feet away from the flood zone, and it sounds like they're a grade. So I kind of feel like this property could be possibly endangered, even though they're not required to raise the house. So I'm a little bit concerned about that. So anyway, I'm not sure if any of the other board members have thoughts about this. Because we need, we need to give the applicants direction.
Yeah.
You get down to seventy-five hundred cubic feet, I'm on vote. That's just me, though.
I think that's a reasonable proposition. I think Jason made a reasonable proposition of the seventy-five hundred.
Okay, well, that's great, I appreciate that. I think that at least we have something to work towards now, we know what we have to do.
That's just two, though, you need two more.
Oh, okay.
How you doing, Dave?
From my perspective, do we need a full set of plans, or can we have an engineered calculation of a proposed savings in cubic footage? We've spent a lot of money having the plans made, can we have an engineer do a calculation?
I'm not sure what would be required, I think we may need new plans.
Well, I mean, you know, the architect can do the plans, but you would do the bare minimum and get the proposed amount, and then if the board seems in favor of it, then you have to submit the full plans.
Okay, thank you.
Keith, you have any thoughts?
My thoughts, I don't want to, I don't want to be sixty-six feet from disaster. You know, I don't want these poor people that happening. I'm not really cool with ten thousand, six eighty-seven right now. I mean, if they can get it down to a couple thousand cubic feet, I guess I'd go with it.
Okay, so it sounds to me like.
You know what I mean, but my concern, my heartfelt concern is still, they're only sixty-six feet away from the flood zone.
Me too.
I concur with you, you know? And when we went through Sandy, it was FEMA, give them, give them more, give them more, give them more.
Right.
I don't want to see them spend all this money and build a house and, you know.
You can build a smaller house, you can build a house, build a smaller house.
Yeah, whatever, I said, they can get it down, so be it, but I'm still worried about that, you know what I mean? Look what happened a week ago, two weeks ago. Who knows when the next one's coming up the coast?
And it's not worth expanding the house, you know, towards the street, like towards the garage?
Well, the septic system, well, the old septic system used to be in that location. If we were to expand landward, I don't think that they would achieve what they would be looking for, I don't know.
More space, I mean, I'm talking about more space.
Well, the problem, I guess, would be then the proximity to the garage, there's only so far we could go to not be right on top of it. I don't know.
Okay, so I'm with.
That's something to be considered. I mean, you can't have, maybe not have everything.
Yeah, so I'm with Keith Cornelius and Jason, that if it's reduced to around seventy-five hundred cubic feet, I'm okay with it too. So that's four of us, so that's direction. The question is how you get there. And so it may mean that you have to take something out of what's proposed in the house.
Okay, thank you.
We'll try to work with you.
Absolutely, absolutely, and I appreciate that, thank you so much.
Thank you all.
How much time you need?
How much time do you think, Jim?
A week?
A week? I won't be here next week.
Do we need to do it a written sub, or do we want to have them come back?
I think we're gonna, I think, myself, I think we would want them maybe to come back and let's hear it, you know what I mean?
We don't know, yeah, we don't know what the number's gonna be.
We got room, what, the second meeting in September, right?
Correct, September seventeenth. Is that good with them?
Yes.
Okay, but before I do any of that, I want to ask if there are any other questions of members of the board?
One of the things I'm concerned about and I'm confused about is, Daphne, you know, you've been before this board so many times, so many times, so you know how we feel about seventeen thousand, which we started with. I mean, when Ms. Ross mentioned monies that were spent on changing and changing, I think, you know, I don't want to tell you how to do your business, but you have to tell these people what the board grants, it doesn't grant, they spend money doing this, doing that, and all this could have been eliminated if we, if information, I think, could have been given to the owner or the builder or whoever of what we usually grant, and then
That information was given.
Yeah, but, yeah, to be fair, this is what we asked Daphne to do.
Money on doing it again and again, well, then it really has to be made a little bit more clear, I mean, I don't know, I'm just saying, if I was the applicant, I would really, like somebody who was helping me to come down really hard, hard, so that I don't have to feel bad about money that I unnecessarily spent, so, I'm sorry.
I think the applicant drives the applications generally. But I think, Helen, you're also correct, that the applicant needs to be guided correctly.
Yes, I agree a hundred and fifty percent.
Yep.
Thank you. We still love you, Daphne, we love you.
Believe me, Helen, I told them this, believe me.
You gotta like knock it over their heads, whatever.
Okay.
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 Give it a three thousand cubic feet and come back, we'll see you on the seventeenth.
Okay, all right, so did I ask?
Thank you, guys.
Is there, is there anyone from the public who would like to be heard in connection with the application in Siragano for 105 Edgemere Drive in North Sea? Anyone waiting on Zoom to be heard?
No hands.
No hands, okay. If not, Jason, it's yours.
I'll make a motion to adjourn this application to September seventeenth.
Second.
Mr. Ha.
Aye.
Mr. Tuttle, I think you were the second.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
You have outside. Thank you all for being here tonight, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you all.
Good night.
Okay, Adam, what I got is, the next case is William Kineke, which is an amended decision. I guess you're gonna do that, and then we just go into the decision calendar.
Yep.
Keith, you can read the amended, the intro.
I actually have it.
I don't have anything.
I have it. Okay, so I will do the amended decision. We have an amended decision in the matter of the application of William Kineke for property located at Suffolk County Tax Map Number 962-148. This amendment is for property located at seventy-four Waters Edge, North Sea. The applicant had requested variances to legalize a concrete patio, which was discussed at the public hearing but not included in the decision. This request passes the standards set forth in New York State Town Law and the Town Code. Therefore, this board amends ZVA Decision Number D020073 dated August 6, 2020, to include the granting of variances from Town Code 33070D, placement of accessory buildings, structures, and uses in all districts, and 33083C yards to allow a concrete patio to be located within the required minimum and total side yard for the principal building. These variances and those granted by Decision Number D020073 dated August 6, 2020, are for structures as shown on the survey prepared by Gary Benz, surveyor dated April 18, 2019, last revised August 27, 2019. The granting of this relief is also subject to such other conditions and premises applicants, applicant had already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire final approval of the subject premises. All of the provisions of Decision Number D020073 remain in full force and effect.
Second.
Mr. Tahill.
Aye.
Mr. Ha.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Daley.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
You have outside. Decisions. So I have a few to read. We'll start with application, a decision on the application of Fidel, this is Robert, the application of Robert Fidel, Tax Map Number 902052310. This application is for property located at thirty Squires Boulevard, Hampton Bay. Applicant seeks variances to legalize an enclosed unheated porch and wood deck constructed by his father and brother about twenty years ago without a permit. This application passes the standards set forth in New York State Town Law and the Town Code. Therefore, and for the aforementioned reasons, this board grants relief from the following provisions of the Town Code. One, to legalize an enclosed unheated porch constructed without the benefit of the building permit, Town Code 3311, Residential Districts Table of Dimensional Regulations, for a principal minimum side yard setback of eighteen point three feet where twenty feet is required. And two, to legalize a wood deck constructed without the benefit of the building permit under the enclosed unheated porch and around the swimming pool, relief from Town Code 3311 for an accessory side yard setback of eighteen point three feet where twenty feet is required. The granting of these variances are for structures as shown on the survey prepared by David Fox, David H. Fox, Land Surveyor, dated July 9, 2018, last updated November 7, 2019, and are subject to such other conditions and premises applicant has already acquired or made final approval of the subject premises, including any approvals required on the Town Planning Board and Building Department, if there is possible clearing issues prior to the issuance of a certificate of compliance slash occupancy. possible clearing issues prior to the issuance of a certificate of compliance slash occupancy.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Hahn?
Hi.
Ms. Burgess?
Hi.
Mr. Daly?
Hi.
Mr. Tuttle?
Hi.
You have a tie. I next have a determination in the application of Emma Carrera Cruz and Luis Igudrova Ugiles for property located at Sub County Tax Act Number 9026832. This applicant is for property located at 3 Woodgrits Road, Hampton Bay. The applicant is seeking variances to legalize a covered porch addition and also to convert a finished basement into an accessory apartment for their mother-in-law. This application passes the standards set forth in New York State Town Law and the Town Code. Therefore, this board grants applicant relief from Town Code 3311, Residential Districts Table of Dimensional Regulations, for principal front yard setback of 35.1 feet where 40 feet is required for a proposed covered porch addition to an existing dwelling. This board also grants relief from the provisions of Town Code 3311.2F, Accessory Apartment Special Standards, to legalize an accessory apartment constructed from the basement of the dwelling, of the dwelling, without the benefit of the building permit. One, relief to allow to remain, sorry, to remain, lost track, no, to remain on a lot that is less than 30,000 square feet. Two, to allow a lot area of 10,667 square feet where 16,000 square feet is required, 80% of the required 20,000 square feet. And two, for a principal rear yard setback of 37.3 feet where 42 feet is required, 70% of the required 60 feet. This relief is granted for structures as shown on the plans prepared by Ronald Palano, Architect, dated May 30, 2019, and the survey prepared by Michael W. Minto, last revised February 2020, received by this board June 1, 2020. This decision is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises, including but not limited to an accessory apartment application form. Do we have? Mr. Kelly, you seconded?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Daly?
Hi.
Mr. Hahn?
Hi.
Ms. Burgess?
Hi.
Tuttle?
Hi.
You have a tie. Next is the application of 27 Dune LLC, property located at Sub County Tax Act Number 9038622. This application is for property located at 27 Dune Road East Qua. Applicant seeks a minimum side yard variance for a proposed shed on the property located in the adjacent area. This application initially sought additional variances, but was modified to eliminate all but one variance. This application passes the standards set forth in New York State Town Law and the Town Code. Therefore, and for the reasons set forth year-end, this board grants relief, applicant relief, from Town Code 33046.2B4B, for a proposed minimum side yard setback of 11.2 feet from the easterly lot line for the construction of a shed where the minimum required side yard setback for each side shall be 11.52 feet. The minimum side yard for the principal building, including attached decking and porches, for each side shall be lesser of 20% of lot width or 20 feet, as shown on the survey prepared by David H. Fox of Fox Land Surveying, dated January 2, 2019, last revised July 3, 2020. Granted the foregoing relief is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired and may otherwise have to acquire for final approval.
Second.
You have a second?
Second.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Hahn?
Hi.
Ms. Burgess?
Hi.
Mr. Daly?
Hi.
Mr. Tuttle?
Hi.
You have a tie. Okay. And the last application I have on is River Rock Structured Capital LLC, Sub County Tax Act Number 9011518. Well, a much longer decision will be filed in the town clerk's office next week. I'm reading just the, let me see. Katie will email unofficial copies of the decision out tomorrow to the attorneys in this matter, and I've also seen the full decision. This application is for property located at 186 Crescent Avenue, Watermill. As the board recalls, applicant here seeks variances to address construction on the premises as it relates to the main dwelling, tennis court, and lot coverage, and also to convert a cottage into a carriage house or alternate relief. This application passes the standards set forth in New York State Town Law and the Town Code. Therefore, and for the reasons set forth year-end, this board grants relief from the following provisions of the Town Code. For the two-story dwelling under construction, 3311, Residential Districts Table of Dimensional Regulations, to allow the height of the dwelling to be 44.6 feet where a maximum of 42 feet is permitted. Two, 3311, for a total lot coverage of 14.4% where a maximum of 10% is required. And three, 3383K yards for a principal front yard setback from the easterly property line, David's Lane, Crescent Avenue, of 38.1 feet where 40 feet is permitted. And two, to legalize the location of the tennis court, 3311, for an accessory side yard setback of 28.5 feet where 30 feet is required, Town Code 33070D, placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts, and Town Code 3383C yards, to allow the tennis court to remain within a required side yard with the principal building so long as the tennis court's dimensions are reduced to 55 by 110. This board also grants relief for the following provisions of the Town Code, to allow the existing cottage to be converted into a carriage house. One, 339D4, density incentive provisions, to permit a carriage house on a lot where the property size is less than three acres. Two, 339D4B, to permit a carriage house on a lot where the principal dwelling does not comply with all applicable dimensional requirements of the code, to it a height of 44.6 feet where a maximum of 42 feet is permitted, and a principal front yard setback from the easterly property line, David Lane, Crescent Avenue, of 33.1 feet where 40 feet is permitted. And three, relief from 339D4C, to allow the carriage house to remain at a front yard setback of 19.1 feet on the westerly lot line, Mud Creek, where a carriage house shall have a front yard setback of at least 10 feet greater than the principal dwelling setback, and to remain at a setback of 23.4 feet where 30 feet is required. The granting of these variances are for structures as shown on the site plan prepared by Squires Holden, Reisenbacher, and Smith, last revised on March 12, 2020. Architectural plans for the main house prepared by Val Florio, Architect, PLLC, dated July 2, 2019, and the architectural plans for the carriage house prepared by Val Florio, Architect, PLLC, last revised on May 2, 2019. Any revisions to the plans or surveys to show compliance with the Town Code and conditions of this decision will not require an amendment to this decision. Granted the foregoing relief is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises, including but not limited to the bringing in of the required development right PBC pursuant to Town Code 339D4, and the securing of permits, modifications, renewals of wetlands permits, and sign-offs prior to the issuance of any certificate of compliance slash occupancy.
Second.
Mr. Tuttle?
Hi.
Mr. Hahn?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Daly?
Hi.
Ms. Burgess?
No.
You have a tie. All right, I think it's not too bad, before nine o'clock.
Did we do the decision on OPH Building Corp., or was that put off?
9:3.
Put off. It's been put off.
9:3, gotcha. Okay, cool.
Okay.
Motion to close?
I just want to make sure, Katie, I got them all, right?
You got them all, yes.
I got them all, okay. Okay. All right, do we have a second and a motion to close?
Second.[1780.84]